Hello and welcome to the ordinance committee meeting for the East Hampton City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 4th at 6:00 PM. We are meeting remotely due to the COVID-19 pandemic and from permission with from Governor Baker to conduct our meetings and our business remotely. Counselor and Chair Derby is temporarily available but will be joining momentarily. So I am convening the meeting for the sake of being for promptness. I see that our other member, Tom, Counselor Peak is here and it looks like we have a member of the public. Counselor Gomez here. I don't see anyone else in the waiting room. We have a few items on our agenda tonight. Continuing business cannabis delivery, the discussion about multifamily dwellings with 15% affordable units by plan approval in certain zoning districts and also the proposals or rules of existing section 8.5 accessory apartments and replace them with a new section allowing accessory dwelling units with either a building permit or special permit based on design requirements. I think we have, there were, I believe that there were some minutes from the last meeting which or that we had sent out. Let me look for those really quickly. I thought. Bear with me for a second. Yes. Counselor Peak, I sent out prior to a while ago. Minutes for March 9th and March 23rd. Did you, did you get a chance to look at those?
I did, and I would make a motion to approve them.
And I will happily second that motion. And I will take a vote. Counselor Peak.
Aye.
Thank you. And I am also an aye. Both minutes approved for, oh, there he is. It's approved for March 9th and March 23rd by a vote of two nothing, although let me, I'll turn the meeting back over to Chair Derby. Chairman Derby, we just voted to approve minutes. Do you want to, did you want to reconsider that vote so that you can vote or are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. Yep. I would, I would have voted in the affirmative.
Excellent. Okay.
You can put that in the minutes.
Okay.
We'll vote on that next time.
Well, I will turn the meeting over to you, sir. We, we just voted on minutes. I, and I opened the meeting and I haven't asked for public speak yet.
Okay, so it looks like we only, unless I'm missing something, it looks like Omar is the only person from the public. Omar, did you want to speak to anything that's not on the agenda tonight?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. And so. Let me, let's, let's just recap, I guess, because we have a few things on our agenda and I just want to see where we want to focus in tonight. I know that Planner Bag was planning on trying to make it tonight. So and he said he was probably going to be a little bit late. And I know that we have cannabis delivery, which I believe we have a joint public hearing. Let me just on the 11th. Is that, can you guys just confirm that for me? Okay. And so I don't know if there, I haven't seen anything in my email updating any updates on that. So I think that we're pretty much where we left off with the cannabis delivery. And we also have the accessory apartments and the accessory dwelling unit piece that I imagine in the affordable housing that imagine that Tom, I don't know if we wanted to revisit that as well.
Well, you know, the last time we discussed this, there were some questions that we had for Mr. Bag. And so my one question would be when he, if, if he's able to show up, I'm just sort of curious whether there's anything that, I mean, I know that we, we sent. Oh, so Salem, you weren't, you weren't here for this, but I'll, they're like, in order to make sure that we were able to get this item on to the agenda for that planning board hearing, we, we voted to do that like we had discussed.
Right.
At that last meeting, the last council meeting. But you know, then that led to Barb saying that she wanted a a version of this. So we sent out what we had because it was, I thought, about 98% complete and certainly good enough to get a pretty good idea. But there were a couple of questions that we had asked Jeff to look into and we haven't met since we had that conversation.
Right.
Show up. I'm curious about just whether there's been any, any research or whether there's any thoughts about this, just anything that we need to be on the same page on, you know, before we go in, because I, you know, I imagine they're going to have a lot of questions and
Yes.
I, I'm not talking about making any sort of amendment to it tonight because, you know, there's a draft that they're looking at. But if there's anything that maybe we want to discuss and, 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 you know, just be ready to have a productive conversation there, then I'd be up for that.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I think that's great. And, and I know, let me just see if Jeff gave me an idea of when he was gonna. He said, so he's going to the school building committee at five. So he said that he would probably be a couple of minutes late. So yeah, Counselor is there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Peak, do you have the draft available? I mean, it would be helpful to just kind of go through it so we can catch up where we are at this point.
I think that that would be very helpful.
And then I'll just say quickly too regarding delivery, I think the planner had basically agreed to take the football and draft something for, you know, final language for the joint meeting and I haven't heard from him. So I'm assuming that that is happening and is in play.
Yeah, that's, that was my assumption as well. And when you said, so yeah, I apologize. I missed that last council meeting. When you guys, did you guys just send it back to our committee into the planning board or did you set a public hearing? Just, just back to us in the planning board?
I believe we set a public hearing, right?
For the full council?
Oh, no, no, not for the full council.
Okay. All right. That's what I was.
Joint public hearing with the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's perfect. Yeah, because I know that that was, well, I know that we, you know, we didn't want to let this languish in committee. So I mean, it's not completely unusual to set it at the, for the full meeting once, you know, even though we're not done, but that's what I wasn't sure if you guys had done that or not. So.
We didn't because, well, I think this is pretty self-explanatory and I don't expect it to be in, in joint public hearing for a super long time. I could see it being pretty, maybe two meetings instead of one and without just a some when it might conclude. I didn't want to. I didn't have a public hearing yet for, for the full council, especially because I, I still don't think we don't have a full understanding yet of exactly what the summer schedule is going to look like.
Right, true, true. Okay, perfect. So, so Tom, I made you co-host. So if you do find that, you should be able to share your screen.
Here it comes. So last time we were going over the multifamily dwellings with 15% affordable housing. So there's, you know, the, 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 the basic idea is that right now outside of the R5 and downtown business districts, there's no incentive, right? The same special permit. What you do 15% affordable or zero affordable. So the idea would be to make it a plan approval in the case that it's a, that there's 15% affordable and then the language around that. It really is, the language itself doesn't drastically change. Where it just says plan approval right there and when with the design requirements were changed up a little bit, be, I think you remember.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. When we're talking about dwellings on the street level, we're still not allowing them in downtown business, which makes sense because there should be shops there. But in highway business and mill industrial, figured that's probably fine. And then I think there was we had talked about. There was some stuff we had talked about around, yeah, so here, the, oh, that's the other thing. If, if the housing units are 50% of AMI rather than 80%, then we were discussing the idea of reduce, of reducing that to just 10% affordable. Provided that you're targeting that population. And then I think there was some stuff around parking.
Yeah, we, we were going to reduce the number of parking spaces, right, that were required?
Yes. And I'm trying, is that here? No, that doesn't say anything about parking spaces. I'm trying to remember where where that, that actual language. That might be in a whole different place. Yeah, that may be, there's later a thing about. That's accessory dwelling. I'm sorry, I've been away from this for a little while. Okay, here we are.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, we were, we were talking about saying 1, 1.5 spaces per unit when there's the affordable units. Which is a, I think a big incentive because parking is very expensive to develop. And we were talking about the idea of bringing to an average of one per unit based on unit mix and project location. And Counselor Derby, you were suggesting something to the extent of that if it's like nicely connected with public transit and biking and whatnot, that that could be a reason. So I think that was one of the things, I really think that's one of the last things that we had to, to discuss was that is this language, because it's, it's just a little bit vague right now about what the criteria are that, that would trigger that.
Right.
Reduction.
Yeah, because I mean, if they wanted to like tie into the Valley Bike, I mean, that could be a good reason to, you know, to have like Valley Bike on, on premises or that would be a good reason to go down to one or if they, if they paved an area of sidewalk that wasn't already made that connected with other sidewalks, that would be, I think another one would be good. So we could prob, I mean, we could probably brainstorm that out or at least get a, like a framework, kind of. But I, I do like that idea. I do like further incentivizing if they're going to, you know, tie into the existing infrastructure so people don't have to drive.
Yeah, I think so too. And I think that this is something that it works out nicely with, this is something that I know Janet Tatro has discussed. And this is something that the consultant discussed, you know, our current multifamily housing says one car for every bedroom in each unit. So particularly if you're building housing that's sort of targeted towards families. That, you know, that, that can be, it, it can just make it very expensive to develop that if, you know, okay, you've got a three bedroom for, you know, parents and two kids. You have to three parking spaces. Well, you know, maybe someday that's, that's necessary, maybe not. So yeah, is that's sort of where, that's that stuff. And then on the ADU stuff, I feel like, you know, we went over that a couple of times. And I, I don't really know if there's any outstanding questions.
Well, it's funny, since we've been doing that, as I've been traveling through East Hampton, I've been noticing quite a few, you know, decent sized garages and people's backyards that would be perfect for this.
Right. No, I've been doing the same exact thing.
Yeah. And I'm like, oh, that would be a good ADU. Or like those people have like a decent yard, they could build a new one. Yeah. I mean, because I do think it is a good idea. It just, it makes a lot of sense, especially with the current housing crunch. So I'm excited to, to get this one through.
Yeah. Okay, so for, for the ADUs.
Oh, here, Jeff is coming in. Hey, Jeff.
Hi, sorry I'm late. I tried to let some people know. Hopefully you guys got the message.
No, I got the message. It's no problem. And so, but we were talking about how it would be nice to have you here so we could, you know, see where we're at. I think we were, so we just went over the 15% affordable piece and we, we were talking about how we feel pretty good about the ADUs. But now that you're here, that's great.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, we just, I mean, we understood, like, we're not looking to amend anything tonight, you know, on account of that we already sent this language to the planning board. But we knew that there was some, you know, the, it was like, what, six, seven weeks ago and we last met about this, but there were some conversations that we had had about just a couple of like very minor points that I think you expressed some interest in looking into. So I just wanted to see if there was anything that, that you wanted to update us on or anything that we want to discuss so that make sure that we're, we're totally ready going into that meeting.
I will admit that I, I mean, I, my goal was to go back to the last meeting when we talked through both of these and just tally up the, the minor changes that you probably have marked up in yours. I mean, I think for the planning board, I think just letting them have enough time to give it, get the presentation and get up to speed. I think it's always important and then they'll have some questions. Because that's, that's important that they have questions. And then I think introducing these refinements, you know, would, would make that, to me, that's a totally fine process. And I think everyone's done a lot of work on these two in particular. So it's not that we would expect anything substantial. I think, you know, I think, Tom, I think you posed some interesting ownership, you know, scenarios. And so I think you should, I think that, that'll get discussion, but you know, I don't know that it's going to amount to like something, something substantially different. So.
Sure. Okay, well, the, I'll, I'll bring this up, this one little thing, just because I kind of want to pick your brain at it. Okay. Because it's the thing we left off on last time was the idea around around parking with the multifamily. And so there's one other, there's one thing, which is we have this thing and it says 15% affordable units. And that's what it says in the, this sort of a several, but in, in the use table and in the parking, it says 15%. And then in the in the zoning itself, it says, well, that can be reduced to 10% if it's if it's, if there's, some of those are 50% affordable. So I just wonder if there's any, any refinements we need to make to that language to make sure that people understand that where it says multifamily housing with 15% affordable units, that also means 10% if it's at a lower. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. I, I, I do. I mean, I think on this, initially, I don't think anything needs to change. I think, you know, you would be starting out with the 15%. And if you are a housing developer and you're proposing the, the lower income range, you would, you'd be looking at 1.5 spaces still. But something that I, it's good, it's coming back to me, but I think Counselor Derby had this idea and it's not, so this is where we bridged off. This is where there, the song is, is that I think Counselor Derby had the idea of making it a further reduction if there's other amenities, especially related to bike or pedestrian improvements. And so I think, you know, I think that's a really healthy discussion to have with the planning board and introduce that as a one, find out if that's an additional change that we can do during the hearing process, because that's something that's really at the planning board level where they would have to be administering that. But that's kind of where we left off. So I think to me, there's a, a small discussion still about that parking and seeing if we can offer more flexibility.
Yeah.
Counselor is there.
I mean, do you think you could just change the wording there just to say multifamily housing with affordable units? I mean, I'm assuming that you know, basically you're, you're rewarding, well, not rewarding, you're incentivizing. It's a mix, right? So you're incentivizing the build, the inclusion of any affordable units. We, it's just that we have special more specific zoning or, or requirements for 15 and potentially 10% affordable. Would that just make it easier and also kind of reward or incentivize in terms of the parking spaces? Or do you think that's getting too complicated?
Well, the reason why, the reason why on the, on the left hand side, the U says the 15%, because if you go back to the body of the zoning, it's multifamily of 15%. So usually it's, I think it was just kept there for consistency. I don't think it has a substantial difference either way. I think if what you're suggesting is you keep going down in parking, if you go down in like the, the income levels and, okay, so that's not really, so I think it's it, it, that's an easy change. It's just, you know, how what will it do when you're reading the zoning and trying to figure it out? That might be the only question.
Counselor Peak. Yeah, just to clarify, I, I'm not actually suggesting any policy changes, just making sure somehow that the wording also accommodates that separate 10% scenario. But I don't think that's like an immediate thing. But we were sort of talking about is yeah, the when we're talking about reducing it to one per unit based on unit mix and project locations, just what, what sort of like, so it would be then be the, the planning board during plan approval that makes that decision presumably to set. And we were talking about a criteria of like, if there's like walkability or bike infrastructure incorporated into the plan or something, but I don't think we ever came up with like formal language there.
Right. I mean, I guess if, to, to understand expectation, you know, the meeting is next Tuesday. It's, it's the planning board's first formal time reviewing it. So, you know, the ADU one has a lot of components just because it's really taking away the permitting requirement. So are, are we, as this group, are you of the expectation that the planning board would probably want two meetings for the housing unit, for the two housing amendments? I think we would finish up the cannabis, the cannabis delivery. This is their second time reviewing it. So I think I can start to draft some language that maybe we could discuss on next Tuesday and then the, the best practice is just that we discuss it in the planning board can kind of give a thumbs up and then we finalize the language and it comes back in that final version. But so I just haven't put, I appreciate that. I, I guess I'm admitting that I haven't put pen to paper on what that would look like yet, but I think that's the idea. Well, and, and I think that the expectation of, you know, doing this in one meeting is not realistic. I think, you know, looking at two meetings, it's and potentially even three is more realistic just because there is a lot to digest here. So and, and, and I imagine if we're looking at the, the reduction potentially of parking spaces, that would that would, it's, it's listed here in the table, but it would be, the narrative would be somewhere else within. So we could specify further. And, and a couple of the things that I was talking about, and this, you know, obviously this is just like spitballing, but you know, if, if they're willing to install a Valley Bike station could be a potential one if they were willing to extend a multi-use path to an existing sidewalk or, you know, I mean, it's like tangible things that the planning board would actually be able to, to quantify and see in the plan. So they could, you know, they could give that approval. I think that would probably be important. Do you agree? Yeah, I think those are great ideas and I'm, I, I think the planning board will like them and I think we just need to vet it a little bit, but I, I think it's great. I think it's a really good way. So we, we want to try to reduce the parking requirements to 1.5. It's just as a baseline, but then if we wanted to reduce it further to ask a little something of the developer, that, I think that's great.
Perfect. Oh, Owen, I'm sorry. I didn't even see you there.
No, I just, I just raised my hand. Something else to piggyback off of that, I think that's a great idea is to maybe include language, to consider including language that the, if the unit is built within X miles or probably fraction of miles from accessible public transportation. You know, so, you know, if people are, if people are not going to be dependent on the car, they're going to either need to have access or use of bicycle infrastructure or, you know, a bus basically. So and that, and so, you know, you shouldn't have to walk a mile to get to a bus stop. So you know, including language for developers that incentivize these types of developments that are near to bus stops, you know, could be helpful. And I think that, that goes hand in hand with what you were suggesting, Counselor Derby. So.
Yep, perfect. Yeah, I think it's great. And not to, not to change the subject, but you know, there is, this is for the multifamily with 15%. So it could happen anywhere, but there are a couple of sort of larger parcels on the perimeter, you know, where this is most likely to occur. But moving forward, you know, there was a suite of amendments that we had talked about initially. And so one that, I guess this is just a preview, but we, we probably will as a group talk about some changes to the smart growth district, which is really, it's like, it, it follows the outline of the downtown. So I think what, what Counselor Zara just mentioned, I think is really good for that too. Because as we get closer to downtown, we're closer to the bus routes. And so that actually might be, you might be able to go to like 0.5 units. I mean, 0.5 parking spaces, especially as you get closer to where there's actually bus stops. Like, I don't know about like Route 10. You know, but in the downtown area or in the mills or something like that, like we have actual public transportation rounds. So that will be something that comes up and I think we can start it here kind of modestly. And then when we, if we talk about the smart growth overlay district, we could probably take it kind of like to the next level. Because, because that's something that we need to do to look at the, the elementary schools. They're in those districts, but we probably, we need to make some tweaks. So just as a preview of that discussion, I think that that'll come up again.
I think that's great. Perfect. Okay. So I feel pretty good on the, the multifamily on the ADUs. I was going over it and there doesn't really seem to be anything that, I mean, there's a bunch of these little comments, but I, I feel like most of these are things that, you know, we did, we've addressed. I'm trying to think if there's, like, we're all on the same, I know that there was some back and forth about this. I'm trying to think if there's, like, we're all on the same, I know that there was some back and forth about this, uh, um, uh, the this, this whole, the section around, uh, you, uh, eight point five three B, but I feel like we're on the same page now that, um, um, the, uh, oh, you know what, this, where we were going to change this word, but that's all it was to say at the time where a building permit is sought. Um, but I think we were on the same page that that, that made sense. Um, and, um, yeah, but these, these were really kind of minor, and I think we were basically on the same page with all of this. Um, Jeff, remember, is there anything that you think we're going to have to change once we're in the joint public hearing or anything that we should be preparing for in any way?
Um, no, I think that the amount of work that's gone into this and, you know, knowing that it also came from the consultant, too. So we have a lot of background support for this. Um, I do think the ownership question, Tom, is something that you, I, so I think the, I talked to the chair of the planning board, and I think from his um, base of experience, which is land use as an attorney, you know, I think he's going to have a couple of questions about that. Just because it's, it's, it's one more, it's one step further than what like our current zoning says. So just, I think just talking through that and understanding like from your perspective, what you think the intent would be or how it would happen. I think just bringing the planning board up to speed on that would be meaningful. And I just think you'll get a couple of questions about it, just because, you know, it'll turn into like a question about, I think the ADU becomes a condominium, like at that point. So either the ADU becomes a condominium on the lot or somehow the lot gets subdivided. And and that's just where I don't think we're set up for like the subdivision of the lot quite yet, like.
I don't think there's anything in here that would allow for that. I mean, the only thing about the ownership that I was sort of saying is that, um, you know, the they wa- was about the idea that like, if a person say has an ADU in in their backyard and has to, for whatever reason, move out and rent their house out, that that's okay. You know, it was owner occupied at the point where the permit was sought. But, you know, if there's si- situation changes in some way, I don't want to have somebody be like, oh, well, I would like to put a unit in, but I'm worried that at some point down the line, this could be a real headache for me, you know, and and likewise, that when, um, when, when an ADU sells, that that it can just, it can just sell, um, like as if it's anything else. I I don't think there's anything in here that would allow somebody to condominiumize and and sell an accessory dwelling unit, although certainly like if you're talking about like an interior accessory dwelling, that might be perfectly legal, depending on the specifications of the unit itself. But I don't think anything in this zoning makes that any easier or more difficult than it otherwise would be.
Yes, I think it was good clarification on on your end, I think. So that the idea that you have is just that the whole property would be sold. And there is no owner occupancy requirement. I think, you know, I think what the chair had asked about is that there, there are, you know, and we got, I variously, along the way, there was presentation from backyard ADUs. And the the owner, you know, the the owner of backyard ADUs is trying to work with other towns on allowing just the ADU to be sold as a unit. So that's the condo version. So I think that might be the point of clarification that we have with the planning board is that this is just the whole lot. And it just happens that both units are on the lot and neither would be owner occupied, neither would be required to be owner occupied.
Right, because I, I, what I'd be worried about, like, if it's my own situation, what I'd be worried about is that if I had to sell in a bad market, um, at some point, that the, the, you know, because otherwise, say that that's not there. You know, basically, the the requirement would either be that, um, uh, that it would be that I'd have to find somebody who would want to own or like, like, I, it would restrict the number of potential buyers for my house to have it there. Um, to either people who would buy it, occupy it and use it as an ADU, or people who would just buy the house and not use the ADU at all. Um, and so I just would worry that that would be a disincentive for people developing them if they thought that it would make it more difficult to sell their house down the line.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the connection that I think we want to make is that you would not have that constraint if it were just a single family house, like you have no constraints, you could just sell it. And what we're trying to do is make the ADUs, the single family with the ADU as close to a single family as you as possible. And so that would be why we would not want to have an additional, like, requirement on there. So I thi- I think it all makes sense to me. And I think it kind of just, no one likes when I say like, we draw a line in the sand, but from there, it would be different if you have multiple units, right? Because we already said this is a single family plus one. Right? So we want the single family plus one to be by right. And then other things, other scenarios where you have more than two units, you you might have some requirements, but we're not even talking about that. So we're just trying to keep it akin to a single family. So maybe that's that, maybe that's the rationale, that I think that would, I think the planning board would understand that.
Um, and what, sorry.
No, I, I know it's done.
And what makes me feel good, like, good about the whole thing is if, say I'm a landlord of the single family house and I want to put in an ADU, nothing is stopping me from doing so here. It would just require a special permit. Right? If I wanted to come and say, and and the special, the special permit, um, under this is allowed, provided that, uh, the petitioner can show that there's that that what they're suggesting is in line with the purpose of this ordinance. And that, uh, it would have no substantial neighborhood impacts. So if I'm a landlord and I say, oh, you know what, like, there's this huge garage in on my property, I want to turn that into another little apartment. We need more apartments in East Hampton, so I don't necessarily have an issue with that. But they do need, because they're not the person on site, because they're the landlord, they're going to need to go and and seek a special permit in order to do that. But they do have a path to accomplishing that, if it's something that they want to do, as long as they can show that that's not going to be a bad thing for the community.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. It's, I I I think that sounds reasonable. I think it'll be a good discussion with the planning board. Um, and and as far as presentation to the planning board, Jeff, um, which one do you think we should tackle first? A and B, should we, you know, prepare um, similar to what Owen did with the, um, the delivery, would it be helpful for us to prepare some sort of a, like a a bullet point, uh, or, you know, like a presentation um, to go over the main points?
Yeah, I think if it's not overkill, I think it would be great if, if one of the U three started with a, as much presentation as you think is necessary. I mean, I, I do, um, I will be, I have not transmitted the whole package to the planning board yet. They were, they have a meeting tonight, and so they got their materials for tonight. Then tomorrow I'll send the packet. And what I did, what I will include in that is it includes, I think it'll include Counselor Peak's letter. I think it, I think I need to add Counselor Zeris' letter. It'll include the actual amendment language, and then it'll include the excerpts from the housing production plan. So just know that, like, they'll get that as the basis. So anything in addition to that you would want to add might be really, that might, that's, that's one of, I think, our gaps in the process is that kind of ability for you as an ordinance to to bring your proposal to the planning board directly. Um, I think, so I think that would go, I think it worked really well with the delivery. I think it um, covered quite a bit. Um, and then we can go through the discussions and then we can add in questions about the details of it. And then I guess you asked, maybe, um, maybe the ADUs make sense, um, to do first.
Okay.
Just because, you know, we all get more and more tired as the evening goes on and the multifamily is a big deal, but it's a lot more straightforward in terms of how the language is working.
So I can obviously do the the PowerPoint stuff for this. Uh, so should, uh, but you, do you anticipate that on the eleventh, we're going to at least introduce both of these ideas, uh, that night? So I should have presentations prepped for for both of those?
Yeah, yeah. Um, because it's the public hearing is, has been set for that. So it's the planning board, but also many members of the public who might be interested would be there to get that initial presentation, too. So do you, when you think about it in terms of your audiences, some planning board, but any members of the public who would be interested, especially with the ADUs, you know, that's the one that the public might come out for, although we don't know the interest level on the multifamily, but it just, so far, it hasn't been, you know, very interesting to people apparently. But, um, um, so, yeah, I think, I think the order of things would be cannabis delivery. Right? And so that should be pretty quick to button up. Um, then ADUs and then multifamily. And I, I would hope that we can spend a couple of hours kind of getting through it and come up with a quick list of things to follow up on, um, and have the second meeting.
That sounds good. And and Tom, I apologize. I was, I wasn't trying to give you more work.
No, it's fine. It's my, I I mean, you know, I I was the one who introduced this, so I should, I should do it. And I have plenty of experience building PowerPoint presentations.
Cool. Oh, and I saw your hand. Did you want to add something?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think, I think, uh, that PowerPoint will probably come together really quickly for you, Tom. Um, I mean, you've already been discussing this and you know, you, so, uh, Jeff, do you, do you need anything from me um, regarding the delivery language? Do you need to, do you need to touch base at all before Tuesday? Or do you pretty much, I mean, I feel that we've had the takeaway points from the last meeting and it's, I think that I trust you with refining that language, but is, do you need to connect at all? Or?
My, um, approach, um, is, is different now, just because of the amount of things coming at me. But what I was hoping to do in quite, just in can, like, just to be candid, is to re-watch that part of the meeting and just go through, I, the the thing that really sticks out at me was the courier. Um, I don't remember exactly where we landed with that, but I think, um, I think we talked about trying to allow, I know, I know that, um, the the people present kind of said that maybe it's not a huge demand and it might, yeah, very unlikely, but I think we should make sure that we allow it as a home occupation, just in case it could happen. Like, and just kind of one person operating, like, leaving their house to go do a delivery. Like, I think that's pretty benign, and I think that's where we landed, but we don't know that it's realistically going to happen. Um, but little things like that, I don't think there was a lot. Um, so I would go back and watch the meeting. Okay. And I can, I can drive, I can touch base with you probably, um, I do that stuff, we, we usually late at night or on the weekend. So on Monday would be a great time for me to kind of set for me to be ready and maybe we could chat on Monday at some point or even Monday evening.
Yeah, Monday's the te- the tenth. Um, I, yeah, that, that, that should work. Yeah, just let me know.
Okay.
Great. I thi- I think that's a pretty good plan. I I don't know. Gentlemen, do you have anything more you want to discuss tonight? Or do you want to, um, look to adjourn? Counselor's Eric.
I just wanted to thank, uh, Counselor Peak for, uh, you know, such a responsive, uh, and thoughtful um, submission here. I think these are two things that really, you know, uh, crack the nut of affordability and housing accessibility in the the city. So thank you.
Agreed.
And thanks to the planner, as always, for all his work.
Yeah, true. Very true. Awesome. Well, I'd be, uh, after those accolades, I'd, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of it.
All right. I hope we have a motion in a second. So, uh, let's go with Counselor Zeris, since you're at the top.
Yes.
Counselor Peak.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Thanks, gentlemen. This is, this is like record time and we actually got some stuff done. So good, good job, everybody. I'll see you guys tomorrow. Take care.
Take care.